Can we recall the meeting order?
Say, "pledge allegiance." Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes. Haley?
Here.
Cindy?
Here.
Karen Price is absent. Anthony Solak is absent. And Cindy Smith is here. You have one. Yes.
On the approval of the agenda, I need to strike off... I put Tony Christian in the... So let's take off the first one, he will not be here tonight.
We want to strike off the one thirty-one.
Let's do that.
Do you want me to take him to the yard?
No.
He's yours, mom.
The dog gave her right.
We'll be just fine. We got one of those bad guys. He's not gonna stay in there.
Is there any other correction, solutions, or additions to the agenda? If not, I'm going to take the motion to approve the agenda with one change. I'll take the motion to approve the agenda with really any question.
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second, in our favor.
Aye.
Public comment. Yes, Laurie.
Is this three or four?
Yes, it is, yes. What was the question? They thought it was four. Oh, sorry. Any other public comment?
Okay. I have lots of stuff I want to tell you guys. By the way, the refrigerator and freezer have not plugged into the kitchen. And before Mr. Holler noticed that everything was rotten, so all the meat that we had stayed for our dinners in October is no longer with us. They had to take them outside and they found it by some hours, so they lose it. Yep, so they fixed it so that the plugs are not where they're plugged in, it's no longer exposed.
I was gonna say, how did that...
It wasn't only just a hair out of the... Like something must have bumped it or something, so he made it now so they're plugged in behind. So that's why the freezer stood this way instead. Okay. I'm working with FEMA on a grant for money from the ice town to be reimbursed to the township. I have a meeting with them here at the hall next week. Some of the company officials and other township's affectants will be here too. I'm sure I'll be asking for information. From Cindy. Mount Ryan Road is hopefully going to be paved the middle of October. That was bid out to be done next year, but they're hoping to get it done this year. They're not paying the stripes on the road until it's paved, but if the company can't get it done this year, the road division's gonna hire somebody to strip it and market for the way.
Do we have any of the loans?
We're not taking it out.
Oh, I thought...
No. I think it's the scripts.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, remember, we still code it out to prevent it from over like...
Okay.
No, that's okay. We love those loans. Yes, we love those loans and everybody knows I'm waiting for them. I want you guys to know that I'm gonna be getting some mulch for the orphan park and some grass seed for the cemetery. This is stuff we had, it's junk. That has just started your budget, so... Yeah, and Jim? Nick went up there and brush all the downed site. I had him go up and brush all the sides of the driveways. And I had him go in there and make a spot. That's where he's gonna dump your topsoil.
I don't need any of that.
I know, but you're gonna need it next year.
I agree.
Yeah, so I had him go in there and if he brings it this year, we'll put a tour on it, okay? But that's what that ground, that ground that I've spotted is.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I waited until after last night's meeting so I could go through the minutes and have the actual proof. Karen made a statement that was entirely false about this board supposedly making a decision above Hogan Creek and not talking about it in public because the newsletter came out before we did. If you go back to the June minutes, you will see. I first, Haley, told us the newsletter, she was working on it, and there was one. Later you will see where I informed this board of something I was told two days before the meeting. So we had people looking for a grant for Hogan Creek improvement. When we did that, the board said we can put that in the newsletter and we'll put together improvements. It was all decided at the same meeting. Nothing was decided after then the newsletter came out, it was decided before.
It's very convenient, but you don't have all the people out here that actually make comments at the very beginning and you can't rebut anything.
Well, you come and you know. I'll be happy if you can't find it, it's there. We did nothing wrong, we're a very transparent board and I don't like that. Yeah, keep laughing, but we are very transparent and we try very hard to do for our community.
Thank you so much.
For your support and apologies for everything. I think, oh, consumers' power, and I'm gonna probably put it out in Facebook, consumers' power is something that we need, and that scam is going around again where they call people and say, "If you don't pay your power bill, they're shutting down today." And it's a scam. People are dealing with credit card information and their electricity was not getting paid. Nope. Why am I just gonna do this? Oh, Brian, no, I'm good. Okay. Of course not. Did everybody have an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes, I made the correction and I sent them out to everybody. Phyllis's last name was Val Ron, so I made that correction and I sent it all out to you today. So those are the minutes we do.
Okay. Does anybody have any corrections or complaints? Okay, the one I can't approve the minutes, that's just a matter of fact today.
I'm not approving to our current minutes for August twelve, right, that meeting?
Motion's been approved in second, in our favor.
Aye.
And I'm gonna put Anthony Keenan at seven twelve. So, for the record.
Yes, I did, so under court, I just wanted to let you guys know that Trent Holder from UHY, our auditing firm, called me last Friday and had me download a copy of our quick books to a USB drive and send it to him because it's our off-year audit. So that went out, I sent it out on Friday, came back, made it more close because it's a USB and it came up through the rollers and all that stuff, so it went out today. So we, I don't know, his kind of ring on it, but he said he's asking for it early, so it's out. He's working on it.
I think they do, too, like all this, yeah, all this time, too.
Yes, I'm in, I don't know, he just called and said, "It's kind, give me a second here." I watched what you were exactly done, but I don't know what you needed, so, and our margin and all that good stuff.
Just to clarify, off-year audit is just the simple version of what they do after they get it, correct?
Yes, it is, it's not a deep dive, but all the numbers are posted and Phyllis and I will post to the website and look at those, so they'll post them on whatever state initiative or what the firemen work and our financials, basically.
Okay, Haley, so you sent us all your directing the board's information.
I would move the money back to the state of Michigan, no opposition from the company shares. I swan into the money on it for interest taxes and if you have the money, Monday, give me some more taxes before there's interest in it. I can still fly, but there will just be a fee after Monday.
I'm gonna need your help. Yep.
So last month, we met last night. And this board last month approved doing the survey. And so we came up with some questions, I think they ended up sending them to me. There was only four or five questions, I think. And then he wanted me to ask if there's anything else, and we're putting that on the website already, if there's anything else anybody thought.
Please, on relation to air community, is correct?
Yes, short-term rentals.
Personally, I think that we should just stick to the subject at hand.
Because he didn't send me, it asked if you were a resident, it asked if you were a property owner, whether you were born, and then we were putting a spot in there to explain in case there's any... Because there might be something that somebody else says that we have got it.
Other comments?
Yeah.
So the survey is ready?
As soon as I let Dan know that we don't have anything else for it, he'll give the lease and they're gonna get it. And I won't have to go see her or out of that.
Yeah. I don't remember how we did it last time, I think they sent it to me and I sent it to Sue or Quinna, who spoke to her.
And also, just some things we discussed. In the way that our process works for a special when you use permit, it comes to the planning commission, the planning commission approves that that's a, this is for another season. And I think there's some people, and I kind of agree, that want to change it, so the planning commission will make a recommendation for this board. Because there might be things that happen that some people don't even know about, plus it will get another set of eyes on it.
But you guys don't understand that we don't, for some people, it's not you, I mean, my money.
Right, but it'll still be, I mean, you can go with the recommendation and...
Yeah, okay.
Sometimes if there's something that might stand out to you.
Your research.
Yeah.
The more people that know about it.
That's what I figured, it's just another several sets of eyes on it, if there's something in there.
So you guys have a meeting, awesome. Good. Jim? Do you have anything you hope to say?
Yeah. Well, September is a busy month. We all know, should know, that this Thursday, September eleventh, is Patriot Day. All flagged to be lowered to half step and sunrise to sunset this Thursday. Also, National Day of Service and Remembered, so you should think about how you can honor all those that maybe served this country or are first responders, volunteer in the national cemeteries or one of our local cemeteries. September the seventeenth is what's known as Constitution Day, otherwise known as Citizenship Day, and this day commemorates the formation and signing of the United States Constitution by the thirty-nine brave men on September the seventeenth, seventeen eighty-seven in Philadelphia. The following day, September the eighteenth of this month, is the seventy-eighth anniversary, or the birthday, if you will, of the United States Air Force. This is an annual observance, commemorates the establishment of the United States Air Force and the separate branch of the United States Military on September the eighteenth, nineteen forty-seven, under the National Security Act of nineteen forty-seven. Anyway, prior to this, it was known as the United States Army Air Force. The following day, on September the nineteenth, is National E.L.W.N.I.A. Recognition Day. This day honors all those who were prisoners of war and those who are still missing. September the twenty-eighth of this month, last Sunday in September, is Gold Star Mothers and Family Day. This honors all mothers, fathers, and families that followed military service movements. This day serves as a reminder of the loss suffered by military families. Since World War One, this observance has provided a way to recognize and honor those who have lost a son or a daughter who have served our country and United States armed forces. October the thirteenth, this marks the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary or birthday of the United States Navy. It commemorates the date, October the thirteenth, seventeen seventy-five, when the Second Continental Congress authorized the establishment of the Naval Force. The Navy, along with the Marine Corps, will be celebrating this milestone throughout the year, centering on the October thirteenth date. Now, I had planned on sharing a very interesting and historical story about the United States Marine Corps, but instead, I thought I should take care of some business, that being of the cemetery. And I'm gonna just put it in parentheses, Cemetery Maintenance. Maybe that ought to be the new title going forward, for when this job is bid up. The job would have a much broader responsibility than just mowing grass. The reason I'm sharing this is because of the lack of care that has been happening all summer and more noticeably lately. There's an inherent need to approach this path from the cemetery maintenance with some sort of reverence, ensuring that the cemetery remains dignified. It should reflect the care and respect afforded to the resting places of all those who have taken up residency of the Zenith Cemetery. In the past month, I've been able to remove the sod, elevate, level, and clean five veteran grave markers and headstones, only to arrive, day after the most recent lawn mowing, to check on all of the US grave flags, to discover that every grave marker that I had just cleaned was completely covered with grass clippings. I want to tell you how ticked up I was when I seen that, I had just been there the day before the last of the five, covered up with grass clippings. Now, grass clippings, it may not sound like a big deal, but they can and will stain those grave markers and headstones. Over time, the decomposing grass and other organic debris leave behind pigments and acids trapping moisture against the surface, and this creates a hospitable environment for the mold, bill new algae, and life that grow, which can cause coloration and some deterioration. Marble, limestone, and sandstone are the most acceptable. Collage granite is more resistant, but the grass clippings can also stain those bronze military grave markers. They won't leave permanent damage if they're cleaned properly. As of Monday yesterday, under the eighth, the weeds growing on that Patty family lot are over four feet high. I made them with my roots.
I don't know why, I told my husband today, Jim, that I was gonna go up there and eat with it myself. I can't understand why it's not getting mowed.
You should not have to do that.
I understand that, but they're so tall and... I went up there this morning.
I think what, actually, I was gonna do it, I would just pull them weeds out rather than whack them down.
Okay, I can do that, but can I wait till I, I'm gonna go get new grass seed? Because obviously, the grass seed is no good.
Yeah, that was, that was...
And I put that grass seed on there heavy.
I know, I've seen it, it was seeded.
Yeah, yeah, so all I'll do is pull them out then and reseed it at the same time and then rake it back up, okay?
Because it's, you can't even see the headstone.
No, I can't figure out why it's not getting mowed, I don't understand.
And that's, that's not the only one. I just, I went up there Monday and I got eighteen more of them.
That aren't mowed?
And are, have not been weed whacked or trimmed back.
Okay.
No. Okay. Shouldn't these weeds and overgrowth have been weed whacked down when they're up there working? And who's responsible to do this as well as trimming the trees, brushing the bushes that cover up these headstones? And on a routine basis, as cemetery maintenance, all of these tasks should be accomplished on a routine basis and should not have to be bid out for hire. Should be done at least every other time when they're up there, but weed whacking should be part of their task when they mow. Now, while checking on the US grave flags this last Friday, five of them had been hit with a lawn mower and bent, bent the grass rod. They'd have been the plastic ones they had busted. I got two hands full of flags and I ain't got a hammer, something to straighten these rods out. I didn't write the names down, so you hook them in, cook it, and then get them in so far as to have straight. Five of them got hit by the lawn mower, so either that's a bad driver or they're just playing out, pulling too fast. The jobs that were started last year up there and this year still haven't been finished. And I'm sure they were painful, some of those jobs. And also, this hitting, this weed whacking, I'm not saying they don't do any, they hit and miss and they try to get, catch up with their buddy and they can get in and truck the weed. And this ain't getting it either. The cemetery maintenance personnel, I don't even want to call them cemetery maintenance personnel. Personnel should be responsible for creating and maintaining a unique space. Among that is welcoming, clean, organized, tidy, safe. And they should leave a dignified environment, ensuring that the cemetery is respectful while those who are in there lay to rest and providing a tranquil space for visitors to reflect more and connect with their loved ones. The pleasing environment that shows respect for the deceased and their families. I know cemetery maintenance covers a lot of duties besides mowing grass, but if they're done carefully and with due diligence, it will foster a peaceful and serene atmosphere up there. It will protect the grave markers and the headstones, and again, show respect to all those that are interred in the cemetery, and I'm not just talking veterans here. How these issues get resolved isn't up to me. As a township employee who works in that cemetery on veteran grave sites and routinely spend a lot of time in that cemetery, it bothers me that we continue to condone such a disrespectful atmosphere. From a distance, the cemetery looks pretty good, but a closer look, there isn't a lot of significant signs of neglect. So, I'm talking even if they got a pole weed. If they have to spend a whole day up there and get that job done right the first time, so be it. And they did it accordingly. If you can't run up there and do that job in a couple of hours, then run off to the township hall and mow and go and do the ball field wherever else, you're gonna have to spend some time. I know they got a leaf blower, they can blow them markers off. And we're not just talking grave markers, I'm talking headstones. They get, the grass blows right up on top of them. That stuff sticks on there and stains. If they have to go, one of them kids gotta go along there with a leaf blower and blow all them off before they leave, and that's what they gotta do. So, I'm just saying, it ticked me off, go up there after, I spent two and a half to three hours on each one of them markers to clean them and elevate them, and they go back the next day and they're covered up. Then to find out they actually hit five flag hooves. So, I don't know what the answer is, but I think, I think they need a talking to and I'm not gonna babysit.
I'm making a list.
So... And I saw this Patty lot, McCory lot in the old section, they knew immediately to walk through that they were gonna take all them overgrown cranials down and then they could start mowing. They just go out and mow them. All the lilacs that were taken out there are all coming back. There was never no topsoil back, put back in there, those lips were never trimmed off and there was no topsoil in the sea. There's old Fourth of July decorations stuck in there. They can't even pick that stuff up. So, I'm just saying that there's, something's gotta be said about it, and if they get ticked off, so be it.
All seems good, I think.
I think going forward, we almost need a list of things that they should be responsible for, not just giving them, you know, a cart and lunch and do what they want.
But Jimmy Allen's been hard to replace.
Right. Even a lot of them that didn't have grass, they got weeds growing, creepy crawly stuff. The only way I know to do it is get down and pull them weeds off in there. You don't have to do it like once in the summer. But like I say, if they have to spend the whole day up there, then you spend the whole day.
The grass clippings, like why aren't they using like backmowers? The ride on ones, huh? I know, I mean, I don't know what to use them if it's a ride on. I think they still have them that, that way. Well, you have a discussion on that?
Yeah.
So I'd like to see that not even be any clippings in there at all.
Well, it never really gets so long if the clippings are portable. I know that when they weed whack, they blow, but they could go behind the thing. They won't be able to do it. And that just protects it also, isn't it? So, okay, I will talk to Nick and just we'll figure it out before next year, okay? I'll come back to the board with some kind of recommendations, okay?
I don't mean to be a poopy.
You're doing a good job.
Now, you do a lot of work.
Really, I'm happy to see that. Next month, I'll share a nice story that I was gonna share.
Well, let's wait till next month.
Yeah.
And we don't go on Archipelagos, Jim, so I don't need to say it. Well, I know, I was up there today, and I do try to go up there and walk and keep track because I'm upset about the driveway. Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Okay, you're welcome.
All right. The sign at Tulsa Park we talked about, there's some tools. I talked to Omega, and to put six by sixes in there is three hundred dollars. Why we're doing that, because I have the sign down on the ground right now. I'm wondering about moving the sign over to the left-hand side of the parking lot so that when people are coming down the road, they see it, because where it is now, basically, they'd have to drive by if they've never been there.
Or pull in.
Yeah. This way, when they come, when they come, they won't go down and do that turn around at the end and then go right into the park.
So are you talking about, like this or kind of like on forty-five?
But it's great. So that when you come out of Tina or any other and you're coming down through England, that's what you're supposed to do.
They're particular to the road.
Yeah.
It's a building on the...
Yes, exactly. But you know, when we put that sign in there, we had no parking lot, we had nothing. And it'd be easier to put a camera on it if we had existing issues, like that one.
Yeah. So anybody has any objections on that, if I can do anything with the person?
No, I don't think, do you need a motion for that? Probably is. I'll make a motion to. I'll make a motion to replace the, uh, poles for the sign that pulls some hard, the six by six poles, not to exceed three hundred dollars.
Motion's been made in second and all in favor? Aye. Um, I also spoke to Jesse in the road commission. Uh, we have a Amish moving into the community on a hill on Spruce Road. Um, I asked him about putting horse and buggy signs at the bottom of the hills so that people, because they're not gonna be thinking we have Amish, and I'm worried about we flying over the hill and hitting them. Um, he said the phrase, he's gonna give us an actual phrase, but he said, the two signs of installation, he was guessing two hundred, maybe three hundred. We now would come on our own, yes, yes. But I see all these accidents with people getting out of shotties. I prefer it didn't happen, but it's not.
But they're gonna be traveling Spruce, so it's out of the lot, right?
Yeah, yeah. But the one that really concerns me is the one at the end of the driveway, because people aren't gonna be expecting them for a while. It's gonna take a while for it to put into there. When you go that, you don't.
I didn't care about.
No, they brought up one, um, how, uh, laundry house and came up to get the keys and everything, but they're very nice people.
I'll make a motion to pay the road commissions up to three hundred dollars to install signs on Spruce Road.
I'm second.
Why don't you slide down a little bit?
What?
Why don't you slide down a little?
Oh, I'm fine.
Oh, yeah, sounds good.
Motion's been made in second and all in favor? All right. Motion period. Did one more, you want? But you won't repeat. Um, please, please do it. So what was the, um, port value of the Northern Park last year alone? Was it two twenty-five or two fifty? Two fifty, I'll say, but I don't pull it up. Who was it, I can't remember.
I'll be listening.
I'll be listening. So it's, they sent me another report for this year, it's two twenty-five, and then twenty-five dollars to move it, and when the cold weather comes, it's twenty-four dollars a month for freezing and freezing. Freezing chemicals to prolong the freezing. That's it's two twenty-five. Yeah, but that's the one that's, you don't have the extra twenty-five for the freezing. So, you want to continue with that, if you have another motion, or you want to just continue if the price hasn't changed?
I'd say continue if the price hasn't changed.
Is there a department?
Yes.
I have fire department on here. I want to make it real clear that this board doesn't have an issue with community center or the library. Our concern for most of us is our fire department. Um, there was some discussion at the last meeting, there was some discussion after the last meeting, and there's been questions asked from the public. And I wonder what this board thinks about having an open forum, town meeting type of thing with a representative from our board, the community center, the community association, I'm sorry, the fire department and all, seeing township. Maybe so the public is on this, knows what's going on, and maybe it would help.
Didn't Mike have something?
He didn't deal with any of that. He did the history of the fire department. She's lovely. She's had a lot of fun. I just, um, don't like the discode. I mean, if anybody was on the open, and everybody could talk, it would be helpful.
I think if you could get a representative from each place, it'd be good, but I don't know if you will.
Yeah, at least attempt it.
If there's not one from each place, then it's gonna be, it won't be worth it.
To be.
Right.
That should be an hour.
That'll be the one that needs to, people want to hear from you.
I agree.
I don't, let's hope the vision is done. So are you gonna send out, first of all, is it two from every board? Are we gonna have it posted?
One per each.
Okay, then it's a meeting that we can post on.
Well, you still would advertise it so the public knows, it's just a public engagement.
And I'd say to cover ourselves, to cover everyone, you know?
Oh, yes, definitely, yeah.
Um. Right, right. So I will reach out to all of our office and email invitation. Is there? A couple weeks? Whatever you see there. Whatever, if everyone's available, I think, you're gonna have to schedule together because we're meeting today.
Okay. Do you get a list of dates from everybody?
Okay, yeah, because otherwise you're, someone's saying, I can't come, we can't fill the date yet, yeah, I don't want that to be the excuse.
Even if you had to push it out a little further.
Yeah. Yeah, not doing it. Okay. Now, all this is not anything to do with the library or community association as regarded that land that the fire department's on. It's all, I think, needs to be discussed. Um, okay. Snow removal, but I got one. Well, even though Jim's a little bit upset with me right now. Nick's been on the phone with this parking lot for twenty-three years. But, so go ahead, doesn't it? Yes, no, probably doesn't seem to be the issue.
Yeah.
Nope?
No.
What?
What? Nick is the only one who put in a, up there for self thought, and I said, I don't think that's an issue with this, but.
I got nothing to do with this.
I was kidding, but Emily said, well, we got problems.
I thought that he didn't close this September month. It could, no, pardon your website, is that where you put it out?
I put it there. And if you wanna wait until this meeting, it's not gonna stop. We don't know, hurry, that's what we're all about, man.
We're looking for some more inspired.
I don't, I can't put it down, so I don't know.
No, it's me.
For some reason I had my head at the twelve, it was my standard request. I can September one.
Okay.
So he can tell or tell I do it?
Yeah. He agrees.
If I do that, say anyone else?
Yes.
Okay. And those go here, so you can just tell us something?
Yeah. Okay, that need to.
Well, I would suggest for, um, for it to be right, or approved bid, I would suggest you tell them to send it to you.
It is.
I can get a bid.
I know, but that's where it's supposed to go, right?
She's done it on there.
Yeah, it should, send it to me, not to you.
He didn't send it to you.
If that's how we're accepting them, that is how we should.
He did ask me, and I said, well, you already told us you're gonna do it.
Ask them to send it to me, I think. Okay, thanks.
Yeah. It was best.
Okay. Yeah, okay. So, the bills to be paid, anybody have any questions? There's a lot of hall rentals on there because I didn't pay it last month. Those really looked like this last month, so, um, I guess so too, while they're all fired, but that's why there's so many.
We'll make a motion to pay the bills as presented.
I'm second.
Motion's been made in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Motion period. Anybody have any board comments?
I wonder if maybe you should get with Jim to make like a list of expectations that's out there, and that might help.
Yeah. And I don't know. No, I, I know it's not, I know we don't have a job description, because we don't have like.
Me as a person, no.
It would be expectation of wanting care, but I kind of thought Jim was going to be more a timer maintenance person, but then he said it shouldn't be. It's more than wrong and stuff.
I choose me to generate a list of.
A description of jobs.
Sure, I'm like, you're all right, Jim. They can add a description of what we would expect for the mowing and maintenance of the cemetery.
It should be pretty well spelled out, so it's all.
The old gray area.
Yeah.
Old gray area.
Can I do it maybe next week, early after?
Right, while I was cleaning, uh, Richard Whitehouse, with some permission. Here comes an ORB and it, I mean, they didn't get down in that lower corner where there's no markers and they did a dome in up there, and it's hard. And I'm visiting some of these markers, put there for, well, it's in my minutes, I got one day came in, one day went out. It's like that ain't the first ORB that I've seen here, it's old.
And that's not his fault.
Right, no, that's not his fault, but that's.
Okay.
There's nothing up there that says they can't, can't beat them.
I don't have any more. Thank you. So I'm sitting there making a list. Okay, motion period.
I'll make a motion.
I'm second.
Motion's been made in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.